Miller, and thank you kindly for joining us on the I Love Seville Show. We very much enjoy connecting with you, the viewer and listener through the I Love Seville Network with content that's local to Charlottesville, Alamo County, and central Virginia. We air the content in, on every social media platform possible, every podcasting platform possible. I say this very humbly and very straightforwardly, there's no platform that is reaching more viewers and listeners collectively than what we're doing here on the I Love Seville Network, because we're putting the content right here in the palm of your hand, on your smartphone, on the social media platforms you live upon and within. Today's show is one that is local. Scott Smith is in the house, Alamo County Board of Supervisors candidate in the Samuel Miller District. The Samuel Miller District is an important district. It's one of six districts at Alamo County. It's the largest district by territory size at Alamo County. It is the wealthiest of the six districts, and it's the least populated of the six districts. And most importantly, the Samuel Miller District has two candidates, Fred Missel, who works for the UVA Foundation, and Scott Smith, a businessman who moved here five years ago from Colorado. This race is significantly important. It's paramount to the future of Alamo County. We have a Alamo County Board of Supervisors dais and an elected pool of individuals that are obviously heading in a direction of progressive, and I say that mildly. We know the Jack Jewett district with Sally Duncan is going to be as progressive of any district with its voting, now that Duncan has beat Dave Shreve. She will team with Mike Pruitt in the Scottsville district, potentially Ned Galloway in the Rio district, who's running unopposed for a third straight race, a third straight term Ned Galloway running unopposed. Those three are half the Board of Supervisors, and they are progressive in their ideology. They are driving momentum and votes behind more density, more housing, more tax increases. And if they could potentially get a fourth to join their triad, their threesome, and that fourth could be potentially Fred Missel, you're going to see an Alamo County that is going to change dynamic-wise, complexion-wise for years to come. And those changes will be tied with taxes, with housing density, with the expansion of a development area in a county that you may not recognize anymore. So we're going to have that conversation today with candidate Scott Smith. We've Judah Wickhauer into the show. I'm going to ask him, why is he running as a Republican? Goodness gracious, the cojones and the balls to run as a Republican in a blue county like Alamo County. Why not run as an independent? We'll talk about the regressive nature of taxes. We'll talk about maybe the conflict of interest with Missel and his employer. We will talk spend, 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 spend for Alamo County as a government. So many topics to cover. Judah, I'd like to give some attention to one of our partners, if we could please, Charlottesville Business Brokers. Our business brokerage division here at the Miller Organization has brokered more than $4 million of business transactions in the last 24 months. And we're in the middle of one right now that is nearly of a $2 million transaction seller finance capacity. If you're looking to buy or sell your business, there's nobody that's doing more of that type of work than Charlottesville Business Brokers. And our friends at Charlottesville Sanitary Supply, it's John Vermillion, it's Andrew Vermillion. This business is 61 years of proudly serving Charlottesville. Charlottesville Sanitary Supply, guys, online at charlesfossanitarysupply.com, and located on East High Street. The Vermillion men, Alamo County's, Alamo Countyans of four generations, voters, the Vermillion men. All right, Judah Wickhauer, studio camera and a two-shot. Without further ado, the man of the hour here, you're live, they see you on screen. Introduce yourself, Scott Smith, to the viewers and listeners.
Thank you, Jerry. Really appreciate the opportunity. So my name is Scott Smith, and I'm a candidate for the Samuel Miller District. So I live in the Crozay area, and as Jerry said, you know, we moved here five years ago. Just fell in love with the area. It's also, it was geographically perfect for me in terms of, you know, getting to family members and aging parents and those kinds of things. And so just absolutely fell in love with the area and wanted to retire here, which I recently did. Spent my entire career in high tech, and you know, that's been an innovation engine that's changed the world. And, you know, looking forward to bringing that kind of spirit of innovation to the county of Alamo.
Put, it's kind of a romantic story. Put the story of you falling in love with Alamo County into perspective. Happened during the pandemic?
That's true. So 2020, we come out to visit a childhood friend of my wife's, and basically got a whirlwind tour. Funny story, the childhood friend said, hey, oh, by the way, there's a house for sale down the street, and I've got a friend that's a Realtor, and we can show it to you if you want. And so we like, you know, we like looking at real estate. So we went down, looked at it, and I was like, oh my gosh. It was, it was the rural scenic beauty. The house is nice. I like that. But, I mean, the rolling hills, we're up against kind of, we're like the last exit on 64 before you go up over the hill, and we're up against the rolling hills. And I just absolutely love it. So it's breathtaking.
Ginny Hu watching the program, Connie Sylvester watching the program, Print Radio Television watching the program. Viewers and listeners, you can ask questions, ask questions. You can challenge our guests respectfully, following the golden rule. You can ask questions by putting your comments in the feed, and I will relay them live on air. I'll start with a few questions myself before I'll get to the ones that are coming in. All right, your platform, the show's yours. You've got a lot of people watching here. Introduce them to your platform.
Okay. I'm going to probably focus on one key aspect of the platform right now, and hopefully we'll have time, we probably will have time, we'll come back.
Got an hour?
Yeah, we'll come back to the other issues. But the topic that I consistently hear about is taxes, okay? And as I'm out talking to people, and I can give you some examples, but you know, everybody, well, if you go back, like, why I chose to run, you know, the issue is basically opening those tax bills as a concerned citizen over time. I'm like, oh my gosh, next year, oh my gosh. You know, and just what we all just saw is you start looking at the combination of inflated property values and the tax increases, it's a double whammy. And one of the things I see is I've been out talking to people, like, there's a gentleman, Mr. Johnson, that probably lives maybe a mile, mile and a half from me is the crow flies. You know, he's, he's older, he's on a fixed income, he's on property that was his grandfather's property that's been kind of subdivided over time. But the only time he's been gone from that property is the two years that he served in the Army. And he is just getting squeezed. And I heard, you know, a similar story, like, at the town hall meeting in S-Mount, when they were looking at the budget process. Vivian pipes up, she was sitting actually almost right next to me. She starts walking through, you know, all of, and she's sharing this with the supervisors, all of my costs are going up. And she talks about gas, she talks about insurance, home insurance, car insurance, groceries. I mean, she just kind of went right through the list. And, and basically said, you know, I, both of them were kind of sharing the message, I can't really afford this. And what I see happening is that, you know, you put it in a slightly different phrase about gentrified, but the bottom line is, you know, working families and retired folks on fixed incomes are going to get pushed out. And, you know, it's a theme that I hear them talking about. And I'd like to make it affordable for them to be able to stay and enjoy this lovely area. One of the things, you know, on taxes that really kind of caught my attention, I don't know if you guys can.
Yeah, Judah, you can put this on screen. Let him know. He's going to give me the thumbs up, then I'll let you know when it's on screen.
Okay.
You do the play-by-play of what the viewers and listeners are seeing on screen here, and it's going to be up in about five seconds here.
Okay. So the issue is while we're waiting for it to load.
It's on.
Okay. If you look at this, this chart is from one of the town hall meetings for the FY '26 budget, okay?
Fiscal year 2026, 2025?
The one that just started.
Okay.
Okay. And then it kind of projects forward, all right? And so the issue is, we all know we just got hit with a big tax increase, right? And we've all seen the tax increases in the past. But what this chart, this chart is breathtaking. It actually made my head explode when I looked at it. And the issue is, not only are we absorbing a large tax increase like right now, and that's a combination, I'm talking property values mostly, right? But it's a combination of the inflated property values and the tax increase. But look at it over time. That dark blue line, that's projected expenditures. That's going up, 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 you know, out through FY '30, and the revenue target is below that. So only, you know, speaking as a retired business person, there's only one of two things that are going to happen. You're either going to cut spending, and is that a pattern that you've seen in Alamo County? Or they're going to have to increase taxes. What I see happening is, this was the first round of mini rounds to come on tax increases, and that will only accelerate the squeeze on the working families, on the people that live here, you know, the retired folks. Again, they're just going to get pushed out.
Okay, so the dark blue line is what the county is spending stuff on. I'm just putting this in very, very layman's perspective.
That's right.
The county is spending stuff on, is the dark blue line, over a multi-year period of time. The gray line is the money the county has coming in.
That's right.
And the county is choosing to spend more money than it has.
That's right.
So eventually, the money's going to come due. And how the money is going to come due, how they're going to be able to pay the bills here, is by going to their stakeholders, which is you, me, the viewers and listeners, the people that live in the county, renters and homeowners. This doesn't just apply to homeowners, and say, give us more of your money, because we have bills that are due.
That's right. And, you know, I was in a board meeting a few months ago. So primarily, it's going to come from us, right?
Yep.
The taxpayers. And you're absolutely spot on for the renters, because that's just going to get passed through for the renters as well, right? So I was in a board meeting a couple of months ago, and there was, one of the supervisors brought up the point of, you know, we have a lot of pressing needs right now. We can spend up to 10% of our budget.
Which supervisor was that? Go ahead and say it. We should know.
Mike Pruitt.
Yeah, Supervisor Pruitt, Scottsville district. I knew the answer, but Supervisor Pruitt.
All right. So they put this conversation out. We could, you know, we have more need than there is, you know, money available right now. So the conversation they brought up was, hey, we can borrow more. We've got room to borrow more in our window. And, you know, I listened to that, and I was like, oh my gosh. You know, if one of my kids came to me and said, hey, you know what, this minimum payment on this credit card, I can actually afford more. We'd have a long conversation, actually, it might be a short conversation, but we'd have a conversation about, you know, kind of increasing that debt. So it's going to come from either, you know, squeezing the current taxpayers now, or potentially putting more debt on that will, you know, squeeze the future taxpayers, one way or the other, though, right? You know, we're paying for that. And that number that expenditures are forecasted consistently higher than revenue, and then not only, it's also climbing when you look at that chart. It's not flat, it's climbing. So anyway, this is the number one issue that I hear about. It's something that people really need to think about. You know, one of the things, you know, you were commenting to me earlier about, you know, running, and it, you know, takes some moxie to run.
I'm going to straight up say you have balls here. Running, okay, you're either this, you're either this, okay. You are extremely courageous, A. B, the nice way of saying it, man of tremendous moxie, huge balls, absolutely crazy. It's one of those things.
Sure.
To run as a Republican in Alamo County, it's one of those things.
Yep. But people have, yep, but people have a choice to make right now. And essentially, this is a referendum. They're not going to get, the citizens of Alamo County are not going to get a chance to vote on a referendum that says, hey, I'm fine with my taxes increasing. That's not going to happen. This race, me, I'm the referendum. If you're, if you're fine with the way that things are going, and there's some other things we'll talk about in a second, too, but if you're fine with the taxes and the increase, and fine with kind of pushing out the working families, and great, vote status quo. If you're not fine, I'm your chance to be the referendum. They will be paying attention to this. It's starting to hit the press that there's a contested race, to a point Jerry made. And this is the referendum. If you vote for me, this vote's going to be a lot louder than just a district in Samuel Miller. It's going to be a message, a shot across the bow to the board, that, hey, we need to pay attention. People are listening, people are paying attention. The pain is too much now.
I absolutely agree with what you just said. And I'm going to offer perspective on what you said.
Okay.
I think Alamo County residents are feeling the pain and pinch of real estate tax assessments spiking, say, 30 to 50%, depending on your house, from 2019 until now, from pre-COVID, pre-pandemic until now, assessments in Alamo County compound collectively somewhere between 35 and 50% increase in values for Alamo County homeowners. This passage, heck, it was about a month ago, the supervisors decided to raise the real estate tax rate four cents. They increased the tax rate four cents. At the same time, assessments are spiking through the roof. Basically, the people in the dais saying, we want more of your money. And they disguise that tax rate increase by saying, we need more for police, we need more for fire and rescue, we want to do it for housing affordability. However you paint the picture, it's choosing to spend money they don't have. And they are asking us for more money to spend money they don't have. I will push back on what you just said. Alamo County residents had an opportunity last week in the Jack Jewett district with Sally Duncan versus Dave Shreve, to your word, referendum, and say, Dave Shreve wants no tax increases. Sally Duncan is legitimately running television commercials that she's going to tax residents more. That's what her TV commercials were saying. And she still pounded Dave Shreve like a drum. Does that, does that Sally Duncan victory in the Jack Jewett district over Dave Shreve, who is running on a platform of no taxes, does that demoralize or dishearten you? Or does it invigorate you?
I, I mean, it kind of invigorates me, because again, back to the point, Samuel Miller, and I'll be on the ballot in November, right? The Samuel Miller District is going to get to make a similar choice. And I think that, you know, no guarantees that people want to hold their tax, you know, want to slow the roll on the taxes. And if they don't, that's fine. They can continue voting the way they are. But if they do, this is your chance in the November election.
Connie Sylvester says, people are duped that nothing can be done or no change can happen. I agree with Connie. I think we're at a point in Alamo County and the city of Charlottesville where voter apathy, voter apathy for the silent majority, and the silent majority, the majority of Alamo Countyans are center aisle with their ideology. They may be physically conservative, socially liberal. They may be socially conservative, physically conservative, but they're center aisle with their ideology. They're somewhere between the Democrats and Republicans, the large portion of the people in the middle, same for Charlottesville. But for generations, decades, they have seen voter turnout and voter results just absolutely hemorrhaged to the Democratic side, that the silent majority is so apathetic, they are choosing not to engage, because they're of the mindset, why participate? My vote really doesn't matter. Look at these years of history. How can you turn that apathy around? Because that's another key to winning this race here. I understand the strategies of door knocking. I understand the strategies of campaigning and coming on shows like this. But it's going to take a special candidate to basically transition apathy into engagement with the silent majority that's out there that's not engaged.
Yeah, I think I would use a, I mean, apathy would also probably equate to like a lack of hope, maybe. You know, you could kind of flip it either way. But I, I think, you know, when you're talking to a business person, I spent my entire career in business, and specifically with a cutting edge of high tech. And I've watched it transform the world over the decades that I've been working on that. What I'm suggesting here is, you know, one person like myself, a candidate, is not going to change the board, right? That's one vote out of six. But what it does do is it gives you a seat at the table, and I'm offering hope that there's an opportunity to bring some rational business sense to the Alamo County Board. I'll give you an example. One of the board meetings that I went to, there was a specific line item where they were going to increase the spend. And I was like, hmm, I'd like to go hear the conversation on that. So I went to the board meeting. And then three hours into the board meeting, and it was riveting. I'll let you know.
Tongue in cheek, okay?
Yeah, tongue in cheek. But, you know, when they hit that item, they're like, okay, we need to have a closed-door meeting on this topic. And then, you know, the motion was made, the motion was seconded, boom. I mean, literally, like, in 45 seconds, they were all gone. They went upstairs, I think, to vote. I never heard kind of what happened with it. But the issue is, you need someone, you being the, you know, the voters, and in this case, I'm talking to the voters of Samuel Miller.
You need an accountability measure.
You need an accountability measure, and there's a couple of things. But also, the seat at the table is really important, because if you had elected me, I would be sitting there at the table with that business perspective. And when I sit in those board meetings, I don't necessarily, I can't say yes or no, but it doesn't appear to me that there's someone that has Fortune 500 business experience, or startup business experience in those conversations. So I'm suggesting that you put someone at the table that has a conservative fiscal headset, and put me in those conversations.
Deep Throat, I'll get to your comments here. Ginny Hu will get to your comments. Jason Noble will get to your comments. Viewers and listeners, put them in the feed. I'll relay them live on air. That's why I thought Meg Bryce's run last year for the at-large seat in the Alamo County School Board was so important, because she had the courage and the gumption, and she had the chutzpah and thick skiddiness to be that adversary ideology or that accountability measure. When she lost, and Allison Spielman won, and Spielman won by a massive margin, you now have a school board that is basically towing the same company line that Alamo County schools have always done, and the school system has struggled in my 25 years. It's not gotten better, it's struggled. Look at what the school board just did a couple of weeks ago. They gave themselves 100-plus percent rates. A Democrat school board chose to give themselves a raise of more than 100%, which is insanity to me here. That's why I thought Shreve was so important in the Jack Jewett race, because he was an accountability measure, a kind of like a bellwether, if you may, on the dais, had he won the Jack Jewett district. A guy that would said, no, we don't need this. He would have been overruled, but at least he could have papered the trail or peppered the trail with his thoughts, with his dissenting vote. I think that's what Scott is saying that he's going to do. Comments are coming in quickly. I'm going to get to them in a matter of moments. A couple for me, before I get to the viewers and listeners. Your opponent is Fred Missel. He's running as a Democrat, backed by the machine. He's in the Samuel Miller District, a known commodity, been around forever.
Yep.
Works for the UVA Foundation. Where do you want to go with this, your opponent?
Well, you know, I had a chance to meet him a couple of weeks ago. We were at a forum together. We sat next to each other and talked. I mean, very affable. I personally liked him, right? The issue is, you know, let's kind of step back for a second. If this bottle, I don't know if we're live on screen, but if this bottle.
They can see that. Yep.
If this bottle of water represented, you know, Alamo County and the 726 square miles of Alamo County, the portions of the bottle that are the UVA land holdings, you know, when you, when those are basically deemed for educational purposes, there's no taxes paid on those, okay? And there's, so there's billions of dollars of assets that the university doesn't have, you know, taxes on. But let's go specifically to the UVA foundations. So you look at their website, they provide quote-unquote, you know, financial services and real estate services for the benefit of UVA. That's what it says on their website, right? And you roll down to his position, he's responsible for development. And so in his volunteer job that he does right now, he's chairman of the Planning Commission, right? That's, that sounds great, okay? He's chairman of the Planning Commission, that's, that's good. But when you start thinking about it, he's also the, probably arguably, the biggest developer in Alamo County.
Works for the biggest developer.
Works for the biggest developer. But he's also responsible for the development projects within there, right?
Yeah.
Okay. So now you've got someone that's working on the biggest development projects in the county, and you've also got all these headlights, and you're creating recommendations in terms of where we're going for land use in the county. I mean, if that was stock and not land, it would not be a pretty outcome. And so I think there's a tremendous conflict going on here. And, I mean, again, all I want to do is just highlight it. People, you know, people can make their own decisions, but, you know, who is going to serve your interests best? A retired business person that spent decades in the business world? Or someone that's getting a paycheck, you know, that's going to take them in a different direction for the best interest of the other, you know, the organization that he works for?
We'll get viewers and listener comments on screen. If we can get Ginny Hu's photo on screen, she's watching on Twitter. She said, it sure would be nice to have a variety of viewpoints on the board. She says, very well said, Mr. Smith. I pray that there are a significant number of people paying attention to what you are saying. She also adds, we also have to take into account voter turnout for a primary is different than a November election. She's pointing to the comments I made about the Jack Jewett race. Smith is, Scott who's here, is going to a general election. This will be determined in November, not in the Democratic primary in June. She also says, I don't agree with that and believe we should vote at every opportunity, but that's just the way it is. There'll be greater turnout in November than there was in June. Deep Throat, his photo on screen, he says, on Jack Jewett, it is like 70% renter housing units. We know renters ultimately pay the property taxes, but they never open a bill. I think that matters. So he's basically saying with Shreve and Duncan, because 70% of the district are tenants or renters, that Duncan had an overwhelming edge versus Shreve, because Shreve ran on this no-tax platform. And these renters didn't have a chance to really get in, I see what he's saying there. He says, with Samuel Miller, it's the exact opposite, like 70% homeowner. They do open bills. So they are going to be stung by the taxes that we've all been stung with. Me personally, my house, 23% year-over-year assessment increase for our respective house, and it's stung. Deep Throat also says, what does Smith think about the fiscal impacts of residential growth? The budget has come under increasing pressure over the last five years. People like Mike Pruitt say growth pays for itself. Yet Alamo County has seen over 10% increase in housing units, well over half of that in multifamily units since 2019, and yet the budget gets worse and worse and worse. Your thoughts on that?
Well, first of all, I like that name, Deep Throat.
Yep, number one in the family, Deep Throat.
Okay, okay. I'd like to also thank Jenny for her prayers there. So, you know, in terms of the residential growth, I mean, Deep Throat is bringing up, that's a funny name.
Watching at his ranch in Montana right now. He lives locally, however.
Okay. But he's bringing up a really good point, because one of the issues is, when you, when you, if someone moves into the area, let's assume that, you know, a family moves into the area and they have several kids, right? So probably each of those kids, you know, is costing about, you know, $14,000, $15,000 a year.
At least.
For the school.
Yeah.
Right? And then there's other services as well.
Right.
But the school is one that kind of jumps to mind. So.
60% of Alamo County's budget is public schools, folks.
That's right.
60% of the county's budget in totality. So when people say, you build additional houses, that's good for incremental revenue for the county, it's actually the opposite. It's a negative for the county, because if these houses have children living in there, it's going to cost the county more money to educate these kids, keep them alive, keep them healthy, keep them sound. I apologize for interrupting.
No, but you're right. You're spot on. I love kids. I love being around kids.
I have two of them. Yeah, most of the time, I love them.
Exactly. But the economics that he's pointing out are absolutely true, in terms of the, you know, the law of diminishing returns there.
So are you, I'll straight up say this, and this is, this is either going to drive momentum behind your campaign, or this is going to be something that's going to be utilized against you by activists in Charlottesville, livable Charlottesville specifically, Matthew Gilikan and Stephen Johnson. Are you pro-building more housing in Alamo County, or against building more housing in Alamo County, if you're elected?
So I'd want to manage it. Again, you know, so if you go into my background, and we didn't really talk too much about that, right? But, you know, engineering degrees, et cetera, et cetera. So I'm very pragmatic about it. And so when I see opportunities, let's say, you know, we go to the club, we work out, you know, a couple of times a week at the club, and you see these commercial sectors that aren't developed at all, like, they're just sitting there vacant. You could, you could develop those into, you know, some mixed commercial use kind of things. There's some space there.
You're talking about 29?
I'm talking about 29.
So your club, Alamo Square ACAC?
Yes.
Okay.
Yep, the Alamo Square, exactly.
Okay.
So you're going by a couple of, you know, one shopping center that's kind of struggling, another that closed a long time ago, right? And so I think there's some opportunities you could put some things in there. I don't think there's a lot of space around there that you could use. And I love the green space around Alamo County. I'd like to see that preserved. I want to hold the line on the budgets. Actually, specifically, I would like to freeze the budgets for the, you know, the spend, the revenue for the next two years, and rework that, and look for opportunities to live within our means. If you did, if you're really serious about, you know, certain aspects, well, that's, that's a lot, you know, right there. Let me just kind of pause there. People may have some comments.
Okay, I'll follow up. Georgia Gilmer, your comments are on deck. Viewers and listeners, put your comments in the feed. I'll relay them live on air. Vanessa Parkill, you got comments. You got Print Radio and Television watching here. I'll straight up ask you this question then, in a different way. 5% the development area, 5% of Alamo County is allocated to development. We are not at the full 5% yet. We still have area, the development area, that can be maximized to development potential. Are you in favor of expanding the 5% development area, yes or no, and why?
I wouldn't want, I mean, I'll do some, maybe some pockets out there that makes some sense, but I wouldn't want to significantly expand the areas. But here's.
So you do not want to expand the development area?
No, I don't.
Okay. I like that. Keep going.
But let's talk about some, again, remember, I've got an engineering background from a gazillion years ago, right? So let's talk about some pragmatic things. So the latest data that I have is from June of '24, right? And it lists all the different counties. So right now, it shows Alamo County, the community development, which is what we're talking about right now, at 178% of average, you know, for the other counties. But the other side of the equation is Public Works shows at 45% of average. So just pragmatically speaking, I don't think you're going to get sewer, power, you know, all those other things. They just have under-invested in the county. It's probably not there to be used, right? Because if you're at 45% of average spend in Virginia, it's not there.
This is what I would do if I was you. I've been here 25 years. I follow this extremely closely. If I were you, I would do this. I would wave the flag. If I'm elected to the Samuel Miller District as your Board of Supervisor, I will promise you in my four years, I will not vote for a single tax increase across the board. I will not vote one tax increase across the board. That's what I would do. Second thing I would do is, if I'm elected to the Samuel Miller District, I will not vote to expand the development area 5% in any capacity. Third thing I would do is, I will prioritize infrastructure over housing density, because incremental housing is a net loser for the county. It's not a net winner. That's the next thing I would do. That's the next thing I would do. I would also swear and promise my voters that I would not take a single pocket of the development area and trade it out for another pocket outside the development area like Mike Pruitt is trying to do in the Ryvanna Village outside of Glenmore. I would try to preserve green space, the environment, quality of life, and I would bust my ass to drive economic development in Albemarle County. Try to create incremental jobs for people that live in Albemarle, not jobs for people that are outside Albemarle, like the Paul Manning Biotech Institute or the Data Science School. I'd figure out a way to take the people that live in Albemarle County and help them climb the professional ladder. If you ran on a platform like that and you got it far and wide to everyone, I think you could take apathy and drive it and convert it into engagement. But the, the, the climb is significant for you here, especially choosing to run as a Republican. Why run as a Republican and why not run as an independent? I'm baffled by this. I love you. I think you're affable. I think you're likable. I think you're new to the area. Maybe that new to the area is a little bit of blinders for you. I've been here 25 years. Why the R and why not the independent?
I mean, I, I could have gone either way. I think that I have pretty conservative values that align pretty well with the-
So do independents, though.
Yeah, that's true. You're right. You're right. So, I mean, it could have gone either way. I chose to go Republican. But what I'm counting on is that there are people across all parties that are going to use some common sense, whether they're Democrats, independents or Republicans, to kind of pull together a coalition, a coalition of some of these folks to make some common sense decisions. You know, you hit on a number of really key issues, and I want to maybe take some of the bigger ones and just kind of touch on them really quick. Like you were talking about prioritizing the infrastructure that I was just talking about, you know, in the, in the stats. You're right, because if, if we keep this rate, you know, going around some of the development activities, but we're not expanding the infrastructure, and clearly, infrastructure under Public Works is dramatically underfunded. That just means more traffic, right?
I mean, you could just humanize it even more than that. Kids are learning in trailers outside schools. How about we build new schools before we allow old trail to expand? Before we allow more housing on Route 29 in the northern feeder pattern? Let's build a school so kids don't have to live in trailers. How about you humanize it by saying, "Kids are spending two hours on a bus to and from school, showing up late to school, getting home from school because we don't have the transportation, because they're waiting and stuck in traffic." Or we can humanize it by saying, "With all this, all this housing that's being built, the traffic is obscenely congested, which is creating ma- major environmental impacts." Like stuff like, the, the Paul Manning Biotech Institute, the Data Science School, I legitimately have been told by the people that have signing, as close to signing the checks as possible, that the incremental population increase from Data Science and Paul Manning over the next 24 to 36 months, those two schools alone, will uptick the population 5,000 to 8,000 residents. And those 5,000 to 8,000 residents are going to be earning incomes that are well above the 125,800 HUD median family household income here. And when we get an uptick of 5,000 to 8,000 people in the next 36 months, we, this county and Charlottesville city, will see levels of gentrification and displacement that they have not seen maybe since Charlottesville and Vinegar Hill, where an entire black community was raised by the government and put into projects, into public housing. Like literally, it's going to have that kind of impact. And no one is talking about this except what we are doing right here, and it just frankly flabbergasts me. I'm going to get to the comments here in a matter of moments. I mentioned to-
Can I hit one other point, though?
Yeah, please, please.
Yeah, just, so I-
This burns me up. Can you tell? I mean, I love what you're doing here.
Absolutely. Yeah, but let's talk, the last thing you mentioned was economic development, right? And it gets, it gets back to my business background. I would absolutely work as hard and as focused as I could, you know, in terms of trying to grow that. But, but what, one of the things I don't see on the current board is a business perspective, right? And so I, I think, I think that I would be a huge asset to understanding the way a Fortune 500 company thinks. I mean, that, you know, understanding, you know, pretend you're a Fortune 500 company, Jerry, and you're thinking, you've got, you've got options all over the state of Virginia. You've got options all over the country in terms of where you might want to expand. You might have some personal preferences, like you have a family here in town, right? So you might have a personal preference to stay. But if you're a Fortune 500 company or some significant company, you've got a lot of options. And, and, you know, the leaders of this community, which is the board of supervisors, they need to understand that perspective. They need to understand the options that are available. If we're going to draw, you know, if that's a topic that you want to do to, you know, grow the tax base a little bit more, you need to understand it.
Okay, then how about we talk specifics on economic development? How do you drive economic development in Albemarle County that caters to Albemarle Countyans and not well-degreed or significantly degreed outsiders that can fill quarter million dollar a year salaries and roles, basically displacing locals if, when they take these jobs?
Yeah, I think, you know, the, one element that needs to be further explored, you know, I have a, I have a, I do have a significant background in Fortune 500 companies. I also have significant background in startups. And I think back to my comment about, you know, what would draw someone to Albemarle County, like, I mean, you're a good example, right? You went to school here, you started a business here, et cetera. I think those are the kinds of people, if you create an environment and do some experimentation about looking at, you know, folks, you know, kind of doing startup activities, and it could be a lot of different things, right? It, it could be a programming job, it could be, you know, someone wants to start a bakery. There are all kinds of things, but I think we need to look at more entrepreneurial. We need to look at like reasons why someone's probably here and might want to stay here and expand here.
So I appreciate that answer as, you know, just a friendly suggestion from someone who's been here 25 years. What I would do is, as part of your campaign, is I would say, "Look, Albemarle Countyans, instead of maybe allocating all this money to housing affordability, which has had little impact in actually creating housing affordability, why don't we allocate some of this tax revenue to taking Albemarle Countyans and training them on biotech or data science so they can climb the professional ladder? Why don't we allocate some of this money to like K-Tech where we're training kids on learning the trades? The trades are six-figure jobs waiting to happen."
They are, absolutely.
Because we don't have enough experienced tradespeople that are out there, and the ones we have are older and longer in the tooth and retiring. So maybe what we can do is shift this mindset, which is just punch drunk with housing affordability, and, and shift that mindset into a mindset of educating the lower class, the middle class, the, the upper middle class in Albemarle County into these jobs, artificial intelligence, biotechnology, data science, the trades, where they can learn this on county dive or subsidized by the county and then stay in the county, working for these schools that are materializing. I just don't understand why government is not thinking like an entrepreneur in that capacity. We have comments coming in so quickly here. Georgia Gilmer's got comments, Jason Howard's got comments, Jason Noble's got comments, William McChesney's got comments. Everybody is watching right now. Gilmer says, "Was just going to say, the board of supervisors needs a check and check and balance, but a seat with a different perspective is needed." Jason Howard says this, "Jerry Miller, what does Mr. Smith think about the pace of growth in Crozay? You have highlighted on your show before, I feel like we are three or four years from the commute from Crozay to downtown Charlottesville, being an hour one way any time of day." Love that question from Jason Howard. Your thoughts on that, Scott?
Well, the, you know, just, you could look at the last five years and you start trending that. I mean, he's, he's bringing up a really good point. And there's a lot more growth that's happening, right? If you lived in Crozay, for those that don't, there's been, you know, huge clearings out there where new houses are going to be going in, right? And I think, again, back to that comment I made about the public infrastructure, I think we need to slow down a bit and get the infrastructure in place first, right? Before you kind of keep the, you know, take the foot off the gas a little bit to get that infrastructure out to spade. I don't, I don't know how long it'll be for an hour commute, but it's pretty significant. And like yesterday, we're on the way to the club that I mentioned, right? So there was an accident on 64, so we kind of eventually kind of worked our way back and went back to 250, got down to, well, what did everybody else do?
The same thing, yeah.
Right? So, so we got blocked, so we didn't make it to class yesterday, so.
I live in Ivy. I know that path extremely well.
Yep, that's the path.
Jason Noble's got questions for you here. He says, "How are you campaigning specifically? He suggests make sure you are everywhere, social media on every outlet. All adds to that, are you willing to be aggressive in your campaign in highlighting the, and I think he's doing that, the, the spend-focused nature of the democratic machine and/or the ties your opponent has to the developer, UVA Foundation? Will you specifically mention that in your campaign materials?"
So I, I think I am. Like, that's exactly what we're doing right now, right? And you'll see some other articles coming out in newspapers here very shortly. They're going to, you know, talk about the same kind of thing. So I, it's, it's, you know, some of the key points, and that's why I started that. I skipped over some of the other topics to just focus on this.
Vanessa Parkill, watching the program. I'm going to get to Vanessa's comment here in a matter of moments. Viewers and listeners, put your comments in the feed. I will relay them live on air. What's the door locking experience, door knocking experience been like for you so far?
You know, I've met a, a lot of really interesting people. I've spent time, you know, with farmers and, you know, listening to some of the, you know, concerns that they have. And there aren't that many of them left in the county, just to be honest with you. I've spent time with, you know, folks, you're knocking on their door and you're hearing, you know, you get to spend time and you get to know them, you know? And again, that, the folks that are out there on fixed incomes, you know? My general experience is, you know, positive reception. People appreciate the fact that somebody's out there talking to them. And how often do you get a candidate that's running for the board of supervisors? And hopefully in the future, you know, my plan is to be the supervisor knocking on their door, right? You know, staying in touch with people directly. So I'm getting really positive feedback.
Vanessa Parkill, "Voter apathy comes from a few places. The privilege that goes along with the wealth in our area, they can afford to be apathetic. A belief that they have no power, lower-income voters who feel hopeless or in government dependency situations, or people who have forgotten that there is more to voting than just showing up for presidential elections every four years." Vanessa also adds, "How does Scott Smith propose that our board of supervisors reconciles what appears to be an overwhelming desire of area residents to provide help from the government with the desire to keep taxes low? I'm all in favor of helping our neighbor directly from my own pocket versus having government take those dollars and choose how to direct them or where to direct them." That's from Vanessa.
So I think the issue here is, if you think about government, it's essentially a service. You're providing a service, maybe it's, you know, law enforcement services, for example, or it could be redistributing income. But they're getting the money from the taxpayers and they're spending it or giving it to others, right? So my goal is to basically live within our means and be more prudent about how those things are being spent. She's bringing up a really good point. I mean, individuals like, you know, there's a number of charities that we help. My wife and I made a couple trips, you know, during that last round of hurricanes last fall. We made a couple trips down to the Carolinas with our trailer, and first we just kind of emptied a bunch of stuff out of our house and we took it down there. And then the second time, we worked with some friends and it was, you know, a lot more organized. The first time, we were down there within days, in less than a week. Second time, you know, we were coordinating with people and they bring stuff to our house and then we drove it down. But that's, that's an example of an individual doing something to help others, right? There was no funding for that. But I, I want to make sure that it can be as affordable as possible for the, the current residents of Albemarle County. I don't just believe in, in spending willy-nilly. I mean, I, I get what she's saying and I do see the behavior in the board meetings, but we, we need to live within our means. If you go back to that chart, and I hate to put you on the spot-
Yeah, Judith could do that. No problem at all.
Um, you know, let me, let me know when it's back up online. And anyway, just kind of talking to-
On screen?
Yeah. I mean, this is not sustainable.
No, it's not.
It's not sustainable. And so we need to make some different decisions, and this is your chance to make some different decisions. In a minute, you know, probably, hopefully, Jerry, before we go off air, I would like to share like the specific voter precincts for Samuel Miller.
Yeah, please, please.
Yeah.
Go ahead and do that now so you don't forget.
Okay, all right. Bottom line is, you know, having expenditures and forecasted dramatically higher than, than revenues over, what, a five-year period? This is ludicrous.
It's ludicrous.
Okay, so let me talk a little bit about Samuel Miller, because a lot of folks, you know, don't actually know which, you know, district they're in, but they, they know where their, their voting precinct is. So let me just kind of list these off real quick. So that's, essentially, it's like Ivy, East Ivy, kind of dropping down south and then out to the southwest portion of the county. But if you're voting at Ivy Elementary, which used to be the Merriweather, you know, Lewis School, Elementary School, or Red Hill Elementary School, the Miller Center for Public Affairs, so it actually literally goes right up to the city of Charlottesville there. Calvary Chapel Church, you know, Country Green, Yancey Community Center down in Esmont, and the Mount Ed Baptist Church, you know, the Yellow Mountain, that's where I vote. But those, I, I went through those really quickly, but those are the, the precincts that are the Samuel Miller district, so.
Viewers and listeners, comments are coming in quicker than I can keep up here. Deep Throat says this, "I would point out to Scott Smith that Albemarle County currently has 11,000 housing units approved and unbuilt under the current system." That's a talking point for his campaign. Albemarle County, this guy knows data better than the supervisors know data, better than city manager and the county executive knows the data. He pours through the online portal, Scott. This guy does not make mistakes when it comes to data. He says, "You should point out to your guest that there is more than 11,000 housing units approved and unbuilt under the current Albemarle County development system." So for people to say that we don't have enough housing, we have 11,000 units in the hopper right now. And it just boggles my mind what 11,000 incremental units can do to quality of life in Albemarle.
Well, I'll give you an example. I was talking to someone just this last week, and they were telling me in a section of Crozay that I frequently go down there. There's kind of two paths into Crozay from my, my direction. And they were saying, you know, there's a green section in there, and I said, "Yeah, that's," one of the planning meetings they made, I don't know if I'd call it a bait and switch, but they made a last-minute switch and, and put, you know, what's now a beautiful little green area in down, into high-density housing. And I would actually encourage folks to reach out to me, specifically Deep Throat. That was a really great comment that you just made. But just to kind of across the board, if, if folks want to reach out to me, it's scottsmithersupervisor@gmail.com. So again, scottsmithersupervisor@gmail.com, or my website is scottsmithsupervisor.com, right? But feel free to share. Those are some really good suggestions, and I really, I've had a lot of people helping[1548.88] I've had a lot of people helping me for the same reason. They, they're looking for some sanity. And, um, I, I'd appreciate, you know, them reaching out.
Uh, Vanessa, your chart shows that our area is on the path to becoming Santa Clara, California. A beautiful area with lots of smart, caring people who are absolutely taxed up until their eyeballs. That's from VP. Comments coming in quicker than I can imagine. This is an interesting comment. "What's the support that he's getting from the local Republican Party? We know the infrastructure, as Jerry calls it, the machine of the Alamo County Democratic Party, and it's a machine that's backed by significant experience and know-how. What's the support he's getting from the Republican Party of Alamo County?"
I'm getting a lot of support from them, both financially and...
So Nancy Muir's the head?
Yep.
Yeah, can you go specifics, the support you're getting, from whom and what kind?
Uh, I don't think I want to go specific to the folks, because I haven't mentioned, I was going to share their names, and it's a pretty wide group of folks that, that have been sharing. But I've kind of got what I'm calling my kitchen cabinet. We meet on a weekly basis. Um, I've got folks that have helped me with, you know, specific things. You know, for example, this chart that we were talking about, the five-year projection, you know, I was quoting off the per capita spending that was coming from a financial consultant, you know. So there's a lot of folks that, you know, are interested in having us living within our means that I'm getting help from.
What do you make of Jim Andrews handpicking Fred Missel to replace him? And I believe, in fact, I know for a fact, because I'm on vpap.org, uh, which tracks top donors to the campaign. Jim Andrews, the current Samuel Miller District Supervisor, is the top donor to Fred Missel's campaign with more than 15K.
Right. I think he basically gave him his campaign.
His PAC, yes, yeah. Okay. What do you make of that?
I mean, it's basically, it's a stamp of approval for continuation of the status quo, right? Um, if you look at just, you know, the, the funding that I've generated since April 1st, right, similar, but it's coming from a much broader base, so.
He's got, uh, 16,974 cash contributions. Where are we at? It's public record, so you can let us know. We can look it up on vpap.org. Where are we at with donations with your campaign?
Uh, 15 and change, I think.
Okay. And who are some of your top donors?
Uh, you know, I don't think I want to...
Because it's public...
I'll tell you...
It's public record.
It is public record for those, I mean, there's also...
I'm looking at it.
I know, yeah. I'm going to let people look at the public record. I'm actually one of the top donors myself.
I see that, three grand.
Yep.
Yeah.
That's what I put into the fund. There's also a chunk that I've just spent outside of that, too.
You know, it's interesting. It's, it's, it's sad. It's legitimately sad. I've sat in those rooms with the Alamo County Republican Party, and I've talked strategy out of those rooms with candidates. There are so many donors, and there are so many candidate supporters, like, key supporters of the candidates that are running as independents or Republicans in, in Alamo County, that don't want to be doxxed or have their name or their checks or their donations in any capacity tied to an independent or Republican race in Alamo County. It is disheartening. Why do you think that is? Is it just the stigma, or how the community responds to that support?
I mean...
Like, you're hesitant to, to name some of your donors right now?
Yeah, and, but it's public record, like you said.
It is, I'm looking at it, yeah.
Yeah, if somebody wanted to go look at it, they could look at it. It's, it's, um, I just think that, um, you know, it's, it's a...
The Republican has almost been stigmatized in this county, and it's, 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 it's even the independent. And it is absolutely, um, disheartening, demoralizing, you know, disturbing, disgust, disgusting, whatever the D's you want to look at here. I, I, I just don't understand how in a, the sixth-largest county in the Commonwealth of Virginia, one that is extremely dynamic and sophisticated, certainly very wealthy and influential, that an independent or a Republican has been stigmatized or scarlet-lettered. I know there's the collateral damage or the fallout or the trickle-down effect of higher education, and UVA is extremely liberal.
Yep.
So that's a big part of what's happening here. I, in, in 25 years of me being here, it was never like this. Like, the Ken Boyd's of the world, or the Rob Schillings of the world, the last Republican on the city council, Rob Schilling, the last Republican on the Board of Supervisors, Ken Boyd. There used to be a time where we all could have a conversation at Tip Top Restaurant, or at Dooner's Restaurant, or at Far Downers, and agree to disagree, leave the restaurant and still be friends. Now, if, in any capacity, if you're tied to being independent or Republican in Alamo County, you are chastised. And I just don't get how we're at this point. Is this the Trump effect?
You know, I, I don't know that I have an answer to that. I mean, you're, you're, I think you're definitely on to something there with the university effect, for sure. But I think, and I know we're kind of coming up on time...
We've got plenty of time. I know the owner of the network. We've got plenty of time here.
Okay. But I want to go back, you know, and, and talk about, basically, this is the voter's opportunity to weigh in with your votes and your funding. Actually, if you want to go to my website, you can also feel free to generate plenty and often. Um, the, on those five-year, you know, revenue projections and expenditures, I mean, if you want your county to, um, continue to spend like crazy, then just vote status quo. If you want a business mind in the conversation that's going to be more prudent with your dollars and try and freeze what's going on, then vote for me. And it's really clear, you know, I mentioned, you know, it's kind of a referendum, and you're right, in Samuel Miller, it'd be more homeowners. But it, this is your chance to make a statement, and it will be heard. It will be a shot across the bow.
Comments coming in, "Please get a Facebook page up." That's one comment.
Yep.
This comment from Mr. Noble, "The GOP, the Alamo GOP, needs to be extremely much more plugged in online than what they're doing." Uh, I will even say this, and this may ruffle the feathers of some in the GOP, but I think the feathers need to be ruffled. The Alamo County GOP needs to figure out a way how it can, uh, youngify, uh, youthify, uh, the, the stakeholders that are in the room. Uh, the democratic machine has figured that out, invigorating youth into the democratic machine. The Republican Party has not done that in Alamo County.
That, that's a topic that I'm actually working on myself.
Exactly. I, I mean, I could spend two hours of offering feedback and strategy of how you can do that, and certainly utilizing digital, social media, uh, and, and, and digital marketing and, and engagement and outreach is, is something they got to do. All right, I'll, I'll throw this, man. I, I respect...
Actually, I want to go back to one comment that, was it Mr. Noble that you...
Yes, yeah.
Yeah, so I would encourage him with his comments to think about maybe getting involved there and donating there. So, um, you know, there's, there's thoughts and there's actions, right? And I took action in terms of being a concerned citizen. So I, I would encourage him, if that's some suggestions that he have, go to those meetings and, you know, make your voice known. There's a meeting this afternoon, for example. But, you know, go online, look at their events, and participate and, and make those opinions known. Good feedback.
This on Twitter, "As someone who worked in higher education, the refusal to participate in civil discourse started long before Donald Trump." So she's pushing back on what I said with the Trump effect or impact of creating apathy or, or the stigma of the Republican or the independent in Alamo County. He says, "Mr. Noble, I've been to one of those meetings. Everyone was very excited to have me and my wife there." Uh, so he's highlighting that he's been in the room before. Um, all right, well, well, how about this question? Where did you grow up, and how did your, uh, the place that you grew up impact who you are today? That one is put in the feed.
Okay, that's, that's a good question. So I grew up originally from Western Michigan, and, um, I grew up in university communities very much like Charlottesville across the country. Number in Michigan, my dad was kind of, I'll just say, professional student, okay? And, uh, went on to be a research scientist. Um, so, but I grew up, you know, in university communities in Michigan. There was a research time that he was up in Nova Scotia, Canada. And then the, the biggest chunk was in Oxford, Mississippi, down in Ole Miss. So my freshman year of college was at, was at Ole Miss. In fact...
The Running Rebels.
Yeah, Ole Miss Rebels, that's right. Yep. And, um, you know, I mean, all kinds of interesting opportunities coming out of that. You know, I selected to go, uh, be a participant at Boy State in high school.
Me too.
Oh, really? I'm running into a lot. I was talking to a high schooler yesterday. There were 500, uh, young men at, uh, Boy State in Virginia last week, so...
I did Boy State, um, in high school, and it was a fantastic experience. It's a week for, for folks that don't know, you spend a week away from your parents, learning civic engagement, public, uh, participation, public speaking, debate, just an amazing experience. Mike Pruitt watching the broadcast, a couple of city councilors watching the broadcast, Nelson County Supervisors on the feed right now, Planning Commissioners on the feed right now. Neil Williamson from the Free Enterprise Forum is watching the show. He says, "Hashtag seats available." Uh, I think Neil Williamson is a guy that just wants to see contested elections, uh, so he's excited. I don't want to speak for Neil. I know Neil well. I'm proud to call him a friend. He, I'll speak for him in this regard. He's happy that we have a contested election. I know he would say that here with the Samuel Miller District. All right, we'll close with this. Why should people vote for you and the Scots, and the Samuel Miller District for the Alamo County Board of Supervisors?
Yep. It's about living within our means as a county. Whether you're a family or a county, I think we need to be living within our means. We need to make, we need to have, you know, we can't have expenditures skyrocketing over time with revenues there. We need, we need to, you know, freeze, we need to, um, look at what we're doing and how we're spending. We need to re-prioritize. Jerry, you brought up some good examples of that, you know, a few minutes ago. But the reason to vote for me is basically to send a shot across the bow in terms of, you know, this county and the tax increases that are just, you know, not only have just happened, everybody, those that are homeowners just open theirs. If you're renters, your, your rent increases, you know, in your next round. But think about, you know, living within the means. And that's, that's what I'm going to be proposing. And at the same time, um, I'm going to bring the spirit of innovation from the high-tech community. If we have more time, and I know we're done, but I've been going through the process on, um, rebuilding a deck and the permitting process, and that's a whole nother conversation.
A deck at your house, like an outside deck?
An outside deck at the house. And I am intimately familiar with that process now. And there are a lot of opportunities for improvement. And again, with someone with my background, could bring a lot to helping make the experience of working with a county, you know, more friendly.
I get this email during the show, "Jerry, uh, why not start asking through your show and your platform for someone in the Jack Jewitt District who does not agree with Sally Duncan to step up and run as a write-in candidate? Sally Thomas won as a write-in candidate, and as Yogi always says, 'It ain't over till it's over.'" Regards, Tom Loach." I appreciate the email there, Tom, you know. I'm not, like, here's the thing, and I'll throw this to Scott. I'm not, I do not underestimate ever, and Judah can speak to this as well, the reach that we have with the platform. Um, and doing something consistently, Monday through Friday, at 12:30 every day, it starts becoming part of people's routines and habits, watching the show, part of their day, they can count on. Do people always agree with me? Absolutely not. But do they know that I'm not going to, like, BS them and just give them what, how I truly feel and like my passions? They know that. They may agree to disagree, they may agree, but they know I'm going to be honest here. I'll say this, I've been here 25 years, and it's sad for me to say this. If my wife and I were not so professionally invested, 17-plus years of owning a business and being self-employed, if we were not so professionally invested in Alamo County, my wife and I and our two sons would sell our house, we'd make a hell of a lot of money, we'd sell our rental properties, we'd make a hell of a lot of money, and we could live anywhere we want in the world. And we could do it probably without working for years, just from exiting the real estate portfolio, okay? But we are invested here because we have to be professionally, because I like what I do, but I don't recognize Alamo County anymore. I don't recognize it from a politics standpoint. The quality of life has been impacted. The charm of, like, the, the, the small business, the small business owner, you know this as a businessman. I've never seen the small business owner have as much headwinds as he or she is having right now than ever.
Oh, absolutely.
In my 25, I mean, goodness, you want to talk about that?
Well, yeah. I mean, I'll give you a couple of examples, um, and, you know, keep me on the straight and narrow in terms of time, right? But, you know...
I like you. We're going to go long.
Okay. So I think it was Jenny that was talking a little bit ago about, um, you know, some of the experiences. But, you know, as I'm going around and talking, so that, go back to the deck experience, for example, right? There's a lot of opportunities that I think you could improve, the, the service levels that are happening out of the county. Simple things would just be working with the other county Board of Supervisors to start documenting. We'd work together to figure out which metrics we might want to document, like, how many building permits are coming in, how long does it take, et cetera. But, I mean, there's, um, there's a process, there's a, a business right now that, um, I know that they've been waiting, like, 14 months to get their, they've been paying rent down in, uh, the Samuel Miller District for 14 months on a property. Uh, that's not business-friendly, right?
14 months without getting what they need from the county to maximize profits?
And I don't know that it's all the county.
Okay.
You know, all the, you know, like, in the building permit process, there's a step in there that's not the county. It's coming from the Health Department also, right? So, but understanding the process. But yeah, 14 months, uh, and last update I had was about a week and a half ago that they've been waiting. They've been paying rent on this property, right? I, I heard about, um, an auto mechanic, uh, I just heard this last week. I haven't had a chance to talk to him personally yet, but I plan to, that had to wait for years to try and do some expansion of their, their base, like, on an existing business, right? And I consistently, I asked a friend at church, I said, "Hey, I know you've got, you know, your business is in Augusta, you've got some, you know, offices in Alamo County. Um, how's Alamo?" This is just a general question that I asked early on. "How's Alamo County for working with?" And I got kind of a scrunchy face and the eyes rolled, and, um, you know, you need, you need to have, government provides a service, and we need to be transparent about the services that we're providing. We need to advertise what, you know, kind of expect, set some expectations. You know, advertised, when I went down to talk about the building permit process, it was 15 to 20 business days, okay? After the 20 business days is when I started personally engaging in the process and kind of politely going and finding out what's going on. I've learned a lot about the process, some really nice people work there. There's some, definitely some areas I, I think there could be some improvements on, so.
Dude, you're legit. You're legit. I sincerely mean that. I think you are legit. I think you're authentic. You're likable. Uh, I think you could put yourself in a room and you'd make friends easily. Uh, I think you have the gift of human connection. Uh, it probably from your travels growing up, where you probably had to meet a lot of people when you were young, and that ain't easy, especially when you're young. Uh, you, you have the gift of human connection, like, you're a likable guy. You're a cool guy. Um, I think, I, I wish you the best of luck. I give you serious props for doing this.
Thank you.
What you are doing here is not, I mean, he's doing this, if he wins, he's going to have half the county hate his guts, the other half of them be lukewarm and not even care. And he's going to do it for, this is the anti-entrepreneur in a lot of ways, for like, 19K, 20K, right?
I think it's like 16 and change, yeah.
Well, they just gave themselves a race. So it's more than that now. This happened this past week.
Okay.
Yeah. And within the week, they gave themselves a race.
Yeah. But it's not about the money.
It's not about the money for you. You have money.
Yeah, I, it's, it's about the service, right?
Yeah. I respect what you're doing here.
Yeah.
I respect what you're doing. In hindsight, maybe I, I kind of hope that you had done this as an, as an independent, but I, I respect what you're doing. Um, uh, this comment comes in, and we'll close with this. "It's fantastic that you're focused on the way the county is performing ministerial acts versus the actual zoning ordinance. You could have a very permissive zoning ordinance, but still get very little production from the staff, which is causing, uh, what you're basically saying, headwinds and friction with all projects." So focusing on a mysterious acts is, is something that this particular viewer is saying, "Good job on." Um, I want to do this, I'll close because it's 1:40, and we got to go figure out how to make some money here.
Sure.
At our business. Um, you are welcome anytime you want to come back on.
Thank you, Jerry. I really appreciate it.
I sincerely mean that. I sincerely mean that. I wish you the best of luck. Judah Wickauer, you were behind the camera. Thank you. Um, we'll respond and react to this interview tomorrow, guys, uh, on the Wednesday edition of the show at 12:30 PM. But you, you just had 70 minutes to get to know Scott and his campaign, um, for the Samuel Miller District. He's running against Fred Missel. I am an equal opportunity employer. Fred, if your campaign or you want to come on the show to talk about what you're doing, we will do that as well. Uh, we want to highlight both parties and both candidates here. Uh, but it's an important race, the Samuel Miller District, guys. For the elected officials, the legacy media, and all the viewers and listeners that are watching the program, thank you for joining us on the I Love Seville Show. Judah Wickauer, yours truly, Jerry Miller.